All the meeting to order. We'll start out by approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on December 12th, 2023. Motion by trustee Kors.
Second.
Seceded by trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on December 18th, 2023.
I move.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay. Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us now to our treasurer's report. Charles?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we are just over the halfway point in our fiscal year. So we have a good buy of, you know, results behind us. Overall, still very positive. How was doing versus our expectations. So as I mentioned last time, our tax revenue collection, we're at ninety-seven percent of what we're entitled to. That's totally consistent with the last couple of years. And then even though we all have, you know, little ways to go, money still trickles in. So we have to bring it. We had been backed up with the village justice court. We submitted our reports to the state. They were behind in approving that. They finally came through in the last month and approved our reports and our revenue. And the system is now up to date. And justice court revenues are also ahead of budget. So that's good. It's good for the financials. It's not good if you learn. Financial standpoint, we're better than we expected in that area. And then the third area in terms of revenues is the building department. For normal operations, building needs and permits, sewer quarterly usage billings are continued to provide on a regular basis. Good cash flow. So in the last month, collected about $250,000 from the buildings and sewer billings. So that's also first class. On the disbursement side, you know, end of year, we fund our pension plans with the ambulance and our other town employees. That's a significant amount. And we also pay the launch revenue funds to the other four town employees. So that's once a year, large amounts that was anticipated in our budget. Also, the other large expenditure in the last month was for the harbor master boat. We made the third installment, which brings our payments up to about $380,000. Right on schedule, eighty-five percent of the total. The next payment is the final one. So they're constructing it. I believe it's expected to be done in the spring. Seems to be on schedule.
I think April.
April. So it seems to be on schedule. We've made the payments. And the next payment is what we accept as final. And that was anticipated. And my last item, actually speaking of, one of the items we have to approve tonight is our schedule of budget meetings in winter, fall, and winter and spring. So once that's approved, we'll kick off an earnest process. As I mentioned last time, I'll be chatting, interviewing to get your input into the process. So we have a robust budget.
Any, any questions for the treasurer?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A motion to approve his report.
I might make it.
Motion by deputy mayor Hay.
Second.
Seceded by trustee Kane. Alls in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, Charles.
Stay calm.
Yes.
Yes. Send a report.
So that brings us now to our department committee reports. And I will begin with the police department, fire department, and the ambulance corps. So the police department for the month of December 2023, closing out the year. The month of December, we had 691 calls for service. We had four aggravated unlicensed, one criminal contempt. There were eleven motor vehicle accidents. There were five arrests, which brought the total for the year to one hundred and twenty-nine arrests for the year. We had no DWI arrests, but we had eleven arrests for the year. No BWE arrests, which is boating while intoxicated. We didn't have any this year. And then we had fifty-four uniform traffic tickets that were issued for the month and nine hundred and eighty for the year. And that report was from lieutenant Drake. Thank you, lieutenant. Which brings us to the fire department for the month of December 2023. The month of December 2023, the fire department volunteered for over eight hundred and sixty-eight man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to forty-two calls for service. These calls included one shed fire, motor vehicle accident, couple of smoke in the residence calls, and even had a search for a missing person in the water. With the holiday season upon us, it has been a tradition for Santa to make his arrival at the windmill by fire truck. We also gave him a ride to homes in North Haven to visit kids that were on his good list. As the year winds down, it is apparent that this year will be a record-breaking year for the amount of calls that the fire department has responded to. So stay safe and have a happy new year. And that report is from our first assistant chief, Michael J. Geyer. So thank you, Mike. Which then brings us to the ambulance corps. For the month of December 2023, the ambulance corps responded to eighty-seven emergency calls. We had five work nights, two meetings, seven training sessions, one drill, for a total man-hours of one thousand two hundred and twenty-three for the month of December. In comparison to last year, we had nine hundred and ten calls, emergency calls. In 2022, we had eight hundred and eighty-three this year. Fifty-three work nights this year, as opposed to fifty-two last year. Twenty-two meetings, as opposed to twenty-nine. We had fifty-two training sessions in 2023. We had sixty in 2022. Two drills this year as compared to one drill last year. We had twelve work details this year, only seven last year. We went to two parades both years, 2022, 2023, and we had six standbys in both years. And the difference in man-hours, we had twelve thousand one hundred and fifty man-hours this year, as opposed to twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety-three the year before. So from our president, Missy Mahoney, Missy Hessler, excuse me. It says, as you can see, the Sag Harbor ambulance had another busy year, and she would like to wish the mayor and the board of trustees a happy and healthy new year. And that concludes the emergency reports. I did have, I know we had the site plan for the EMS building. Is that around the boards there? So that's the, what we've been working on, the committee has been working on for these last few months with, with our architect. And that's the site plan for the emergency services building. If anybody wants to take a closer look later, welcome to it.
Notice it doesn't have the ambulance property on it, right?
Right. That should be, the property should be cleared. Yeah, it's coming off. Which is about, I think it's just over half an acre. We do have, we can modify the lot line as, as to see, you know, what our parking, parking demands are. So we may be able to make that a little bit bigger. So that concludes my reports. And I will now turn to deputy mayor Hay for the parks, open spaces, justice court, and the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with the justice court. What we saw in 2023, just a summary for the year, is that the activity that's flown through the justice court has ramped back up to a level that was closer to the 2021 and 2019 levels. It fluctuates some year to year, but there were six thousand cases that came before the justice court last year. The vast majority of those are parking cases, some vehicle traffic law cases as well, but only about thirty or forty of those. And then penal law cases, about a dozen or so of those, which is down significantly. The volume of dollars that came in through the justice court is back up again, over, over half a million dollars of that amount roughly, as the treasurer reported. The state has been a little slow reimbursing the amount that the village is allowed to keep. It's usually around eighty percent. And so we'd expect that the justice court would be about, as the treasurer said, above budget. Still below where we were during our peaks during the COVID period, but it seems like we're getting back to normal despite the fact that, as we know, this year, the police force was understaffed for most of the high season, the summer months. So again, kudos to them for, for people getting out and getting the job done, the TCOs, as well as the officers themselves. I'll turn now to the parks and open space committee. And as we know, there is a seven-member committee for parks and open space. Trustee Kane, myself, the head of the planning board, John Chaku is here, lieutenant Drake who's here, Drew Harvey, who is here, is going to give us a little presentation. And then as well as Rachel D., the head of Mash Park, and Rory McAvoy is the, is the post act committee. Drew is going to give us a presentation with a few handouts, I think, for the board members. So why don't you come up, Drew? And I'm glad we get to do this tonight because if we didn't get to do it tonight, we would miss Drew at our next meeting because he's heading out of town to get married tomorrow morning.
Ah, this is part of the planning process as well?
So hard to that moment. Yeah, thank you. So as part of the parks and open spaces, buyers committee, we're looking at a lot of different ways to activate a lot of parklands, open space parcels. And one thing that, that I've always seen as being overlooked is in the village of Sag Harbor, are water access points in the village. So in the village of Sag Harbor, there currently exists seven water access points where the public right of way meets the water in the Sag Harbor Cove and upper Sag Harbor Cove. And these are points that are currently on zoning map for the village. So for decades, these underwater access points have served the village of Sag Harbor as its, as areas to launch a small craft, kayak, rowboat, et cetera. A place to walk down to the water and also just a place where the view is preserved. There's not a house there. These seven locations are primarily in the neighborhood of Redwood. Five of them are there, two others, Green Street and John Street. And when you look at other townships on the seven, Long Island, Shelter Island, and Block Island, Naugway, these are prioritized by the town and they're marked, they're upkept, they're maintained. And they are preserved in a way where it's easy to access the water with a small craft. In the village of Sag Harbor, we've seen some of these locations not be necessarily kept up to the standard that they have been previously. And we've also seen some of these locations be lost over decades. So the seven locations that I've listed are ones that are still there, they currently exist. And we'd like to formalize them with a marker, some sort of standardized signage to let people know that I can access the water there. That's an area that's maintained for me. It's a, it's a standard point. So they're not hiking over various locations to drive a kayak. So if you look at the proposed signage, it's something that we definitely want the trustees input on, also to public comment as well. But when I, when I look at some of these other townships who are doing this very well, a brand hitching post is kind of a testable option. Incorporated, the village of Sag Harbor, Sydney, it's, it's for public use. It's known by the village. It's really a market. And then I have some entries of road ends, so you can see. You can see places where there's more maintenance going on. You can see places where there's not a lot of maintenance going on. Obviously, the areas that there's not a lot of maintenance going on, you know, in ten years from now, you might see it disappear altogether. With a marker, it never allows the rest of the city to decide it, to say, well, it's not being used. So I can actually overtake it. If these are not used over decades, they're allowed to be taken by adjacent properties. And that's what we don't want to have happen. So what we're really asking of the trustees is to proceed in our these locations with a standardized approved sign. Something that we can keep looking into. We can seek events and we can get prices back for that. But we'd also like to investigate the restoration of these water access points. If there's a need to improve them, to make them easier accessible. Are they the best they can be? Is it, is it easy to access the water or is it hazardous? I'd also like to investigate historic water access points in the village that have been lost. How have they been lost? Where did they used to exist? How can we prevent this from happening in the future? And then there's a potential integration of educational opportunities associated with these water access points. And this is under the New York State Maritime Heritage Preservation Sub项program. So I say kind of a preliminary application stat, we were awarded the second stage of it. The second stage entails working with the village, working with the village grant writer to access some funds to pursue this project. If we're able to tie it, you know, there's a swat space, a maritime history of the village of Sag Harbor. It's kind of a great place to highlight some of that, and we can get some funding for the project through that as well. So yeah, really hoping that, you know, to comment, it's kind of the first, the first cut in presenting this. So as the advisory committee, you know, we want to hear your feedback and hopefully we can, we can move forward. If this is something that the village wants to prioritize.
I, I'm looking at these, I'm all for investigating the markers and getting the signage to, to designate these areas as public access, but what's disturbing to me is the runoff.
Yes.
The way that this is not mitigated.
We can work on that.
Certainly, I think that Amherst was one of the projects that we did, that, that is being revised, the plan for that. And I believe Cove Road is another one that has a project that's in the works. So I think that we should, we should work together in trying to mitigate, while providing access, mitigate the runoff that goes into the, into the waterway.
To take a holistic view, because there would be money available from Southampton CPF, water quality, to put, to look at all of these. I guess Round Pond is a really good example of a much larger. I'll, I'll be really brief. I, I love the hitching post. I think it's great. I think it's, it's perfect. Happy to talk with you about grants. And we could sit down, look at which one of these are already included. Mary Ann Eddy is here tonight, would be able to help on that. And I, it's just a great idea. Thanks for doing this. And if we can find more water access that's out there that has been overgrown historically, let's see if we can reclaim it. Thanks so much for taking this off.
I think this is a great idea too. It only occurs to me, do we want to put two posts on each one? To really make it obvious, because you have one in the middle.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, we don't want, you know, to restrict access. We can also look at, like, what specifically these other towns are doing. I'm sure there's some reasons behind why, why they chose to do what they did. That's enough. You would investigate if we move forward.
So if you, if you take, for example, the Round Pond project, there, we have the mitigation plantings and drainage system. Then we put aside an access to.
I think Round Pond is just fantastic.
If we could, I think that we need to work that into these, this access. Because just looking at this, to me, it's disturbing that you have all of that runoff just going right into the water without it being mitigated. So if we could incorporate maybe a walkway or some form of an access and also mitigate the runoff. So I'm all for going for, forward with the markings. I think that that's important. And then we can decide with the projects where we're going to put them up. Find out how much they are per marker, and if we need two, we'll get two.
Someone had mentioned something, I don't know if we were talking about ideas like this in the abstract of fundraising by having naming rights. Like we have lots of streets in this, named after people.
Or benches.
That, you know, benches and everything else, that maybe we could get people to sponsor these kind of posts for a sum that's far in excess of the cost of the post. So that their name could be associated with it. And the excess funds then could be used as part of the, of, of the process of of mitigating the water runoff or whatever else needs to be done. There's also maintenance for everything.
Exactly. Yeah, there's long-term maintenance. Like the phase one is obviously, let's make them very much known in public. Let's mark.
I think that's a great start.
And I think that's going to spur people to say, this should, this could be better. We could be doing this.
Raise the profile.
All on the team of this project. Yep.
Community engagement piece is a nice piece.
Maybe get the neighbors around involved in, in, in some maintenance, you know? We could try.
Yeah, I mean, when I, when I speak to, what I spoke to Shelter Island and Block Island, you know, a lot of the maintenance, it then becomes self-sufficient because the more people use it, the more it becomes maintained. And people are, you know, they're more inclined to, to help out with that as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Want to make them?
Do you need a motion to explore the pricing and the?
Well, so what I'd like to do is, at the last meeting, we gave a conceptual plan for water and Long Island Avenue, as well as, so we, we asked the village if it was okay to pursue developing an RFP to bring to the board for review for both the traffic study and the engineering environmental assessment. I would suggest we roll this into that we're working, we've been compiling RFP samples to develop the RFP, ask to bring to this board. Could we include those in those RFPs as well as moving forward the investigation would be the answer?
You're talking about the price of the post. Is that what you're talking about?
More than the price of the post, what you've just talked about, creating access, mitigation, for example, to improve the draining as part of the environment.
I would, yeah, I would check with Rusty also, from Nelson Pope and Voorhees, because some of the, I believe Cove and Amherst are already in the works, so they're being redesigned. So you're going to want to try to see where they overlap.
And there is funding in place for Cove and Amherst from CPF, Southampton CPF, I believe.
And then we'd want to look at, in addition to that, I think, are these appropriate for access now? And what can you do to improve them for water access in each of these locations?
Yeah, yeah, one thing that, that goes back to the history of Sag Harbor. Some of these locations, this, these are areas where local residents who don't live on the water can, can launch a boat. And that's kind of, I would think the priority is to maintain the access and then increase environmental mitigation. It's a great opportunity for stormwater runoff projects and, and all of that. Right now, they're open. People are using them. They're on their own. So the phase one would be, let's move forward on, on marking them and then begin to investigate one of the next steps to improve the access and, and move towards possible environmental products.
Sounds great. I'm hope, if you want to roll the semi, I hope.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, agreed.
The surveyor could put monuments in the quarters.
I mean, part of this is, we have, we have the documentation of each of the open spaces, the access points, to see what the actual space is. So understanding what that is will help inform how to mark, where to mark, things like that.
And raising the profile by installing the monument before, you know.
It's a great first step.
It's a great first step because it actually establishes it as a real thing.
Exactly.
A nice walking tour. They could go from one to the next, right?
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks very much. It's great.
Thank you, Drew.
Thanks, Drew.
And good luck.
If it's possible, we can comment on this.
At the end of. We have, yeah, fifteen-minute comment, a public session on, on all of this when the reports are concluded.
That's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, deputy mayor Hay.
Thank you, Drew.
That brings me to trustee Kors with the sewer department, village grants, and CBA.
Okay, so we'll start the regular report from the sewage treatment plant for the month of December. Total gallons is 1.565 million. We removed 20,000 gallons of sludge. DMR reports were forwarded on 12/22. Suffolk County DHS inspection, the next inspection was 108, so I guess that was yesterday. This report was written a little, it was written last week. And, and New York State DC inspection day was open. We had no complaints for the month of December and the summary of operation. The plant is running well under all permitted levels. Now just operating two of the five basins. There were no, no outside contractors on site this month, so everything ran very well. Flow from November to December was a decrease of 262,000 gallons. So that ends that report. Moving on to grants, we've had an interesting week in grants. First is new grant opportunity was brought to our attention, which is New York State Department of Homeland Security Emergency Services Volunteer Fire Instruction and Response Equipment Grant Program. There's $25 million available statewide. And without getting too much into the weeds, there's essentially maximum request for new construction, which is timely because we have here up to $1 million available. And then for per project, the, more than likely, you would never get the full amount of any grant because it has to be spread out over the states. But this is new, and there's also an equipment. There's an equipment availability with $5 million statewide. Maximum request for equipment is half a million dollars. So I've been, we have to have these applications in by the end of April. We, we've made a little outreach to fire department. We're hopefully next week, we're going to get together, discuss this in greater detail, include Jen Messiano or Grant Rider, and see where we might plug in and what makes most sense. It's a point-based system. Unfortunately, you know, we're, we're not a part of New York that's in need of, of development. We're, we're pretty, pretty well down the road there. But we also, we, we would be considered a rural area, and we also share services with other municipalities. So when we work out all these points, hopefully there'll be something in for us. It's never happened before. So we'll be following up on that. Other grant news, I had reported last month, we have a $5.9 million grant under consideration by the state of New York as part of the sewer service expansion program. We did get an award of just over $2 million, which we all had assumed as part of that 5.9 million was a partial award. Well, it turns out that that $2 million was a completely separate grant application. So the 5.9 million is still under consideration. And so sort of the summary of operations is where all this great big project is. We had a meeting this week and we're sort of pivoting from fundraising into execution. And that brought up a lot of issues that I think I just need to speak to briefly to at least sow the seed in people's heads as to some changes or some things we need to consider. So forgive me, I'm going to read this, because I don't want to forget anything. We have, we're pivoting from fundraising to implementation for the sewer service area expansion. I'd like to raise a couple of issues that are important, but first I want to give some perspective to the size of this project. Our last annual village budget was just over $15 million. The grants received to date for the source, for sewer shed expansion is just over $10 million. $10,183,288 we have already received in grants. And we have a further $7,222,000 are pending. If anybody wants details, there's a spreadsheet over here that'll explain that further. So this is going to be one of the single biggest projects the village has ever undertaken. And I think it needs to be addressed in a manner that's outside of our usual process. We can't expect existing village personnel to just absorb this into their regular work schedule and carry on. I mean, we, we will have the qualified help and oversight of Cameron Engineering and Jen Messiano. However, I believe the success of the project and many others that will be ongoing in the village will depend on the oversight that can only be provided by retaining the services of a full-time village manager. We can describe the job description and think about that in greater detail. But just as a concept, this project is going to be enormously complicated. Aside from the physical work, there'll be a mountain of coordination and planning to include the affected homeowners, all the stakeholders regard to equipment, material staging, road closures, work rules, grants compliance. All of these grants come with their own set of rules, and there's about nine of them. And they all need different reporting and have different criteria that we must comply with so that we get reimbursed, because they're all reimbursement grants. There's also the aspect that the village is going to have to finance this in a rolling manner. We're going to talk about that later this week, as to how do we finance this. This is all well and good to get the grant money in some respects. In retrospect, that was the easy bit. Now we have to figure out how we achieve this project. But we have grant compliance, we have women minority-owned business compliance and reporting, invoicing, cost tracking, payment schedules, coordinating with the police, fire, and ambulance services as to how all this works, building department code enforcement, and then we have outreach to residents and all the business owners, chamber of commerce, coordinating all the contractors and consultants, and coordinating with other utilities that might be planning work in the village. We saw, you know, Suffolk County Water Command, they dig up streets with pipes down. And in addition, we have our annual schedule here, you know, we can't work during the summer. And in a rough rule of, like, just sort of back of the napkin calculations, Area K could be achieved in about nine months from the time we first break ground. Area L will be about eighteen months in doing this project. So there's a lot to be considered there when you have to start work and stop work and clean up the village. So we're, we're right ready, we're just about ready to send out drawings to contractors, propose contracts, send out. drawings to contractors, proposed contracts, send out RFPs. Drawings are all ready to go, the packages are ready. But before that, we still have a few questions to be answered that we're working through with the engineers. And I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention what I believe is this vital need, not just for this project, but running this village, as I'm sure any mayor who's sat in the seat will tell you, is not an easy job. We have an enormous amount of activity, so many things going on that I think this village is in desperate need, and we've talked about this over the last few administrations. And maybe this project will, will be the catalyst that makes us really like, take the bull by the horns here and realize that we need some help to oversee these projects and every other project that goes on. Anyhow, won't take any more of your time, thanks for your intelligence.
Not to mention, if we're going to do something that the emergency service.
Well, again, if there's all of these, that's.
There's another major project.
Huge projects that are, that are on, that are on, on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Korsch.
Um, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings me to Trustee Plum with Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation and Review.
Well, Dee's in Florida this week, so I can get his typical report, D. Yardley. So I think you just have to ask me questions because I, we know the leaves have been picked up, the lights are in, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think you're any great, unless there are any.
Christmas trees.
Christmas trees.
Christmas trees, right, yep. And, uh.
It'll blow away tonight.
What about the clock? How's the clock coming along?
You have to ask Dee that, we have a difference of opinion.
Okay.
Anyway.
Are we gonna get the boxing gloves out or how are we gonna settle this? We're gonna have to. Game of checkers?
Anyway, so that, that's that, sorry. Board of Historic Preservation Review is churning along fine. There was some talk about adding two members because, um, the, the board feels that they need an, an architect or an engineer on, on the board. So we'll get procedurally how we do that, I'm a hundred percent sure. Yeah, but, and then finally.
Is that to expand the board then from five to seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, finally, I, I want to mention, most on the Climate Smart Cities Committee, and I want to shout out to Mary Ann Eddy because we've got all the paper again to the state for the climate de bronze, uh, status. And it, and it, it's, it was a big job, spearheaded by Mary Ann. And it, it's, it's, you, you get points with the state for these types of, all types.
All grants, it's a real health, it's a point system, we'll get another five, 10 points.
Yeah, that, and also we get it, it's a $10,000, um, I guess, uh, gift or something, I don't know what we do with it, but from, one once we reach that level. And, and they, and then it's good for five years and then you have to reapply, but it's, it's done as far as I could tell, so. But thank you, Mary. And, um, that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Plum. And that takes us to Trustee Kane for the Building Department, Harbor and Docks and the Harbor Committee.
Okay, great. Um, so I'll start with the Building Department. Uh, as we come into the last month of the calendar year, we, the final numbers were 751,000 and change, which really ran at a pace of about 85% of 2023, or sorry, 2022. But still, uh, 80-plus percent of where our budget would have been. So, um, 2022 was a big year and I would also say 2023 was a big year as well. And it's going to be interesting just to see how much renovation and how much new building will continue to go on. As you know, you, you drive around and you see there's still a lot of projects in place. And along with that, 17 permits were issued in the month of December, which is a big number for December. Maybe it's because it was milder weather and people were willing to continue to do work. Thirty-two inspections, 22 certificate, certificate of occupancy and 14 violations. And the one thing I did want to mention, in the summer, uh, towards the latter part of the summer, North Haven had asked for our building department, and particularly around the code enforcement, would help North Haven. And so our code enforcement and building inspector have been doing, um, those jobs as needed. So just to give you an idea of what happened this past month, in North Haven, there were five notices of violation, four follow-ups and investigations, and then four just, just general patrol, just going there and, and helping out because they're, uh, just have a smaller staff there. And also in general, on the code enforcement side, there were 15 complaints, uh, taken and all of those were addressed. There were 16 fire safety inspections, 14 violations written, and the total number of violations is 45. So just to give you a sense of, uh, how busy, uh, how busy that department is. And then as we go to Harbor, we came in for the month of December, uh, this year, it was 54, 874 was the revenue that was brought in. That was a little bit less than to December of '22, which was 79,000. And as we look at it, this time of year, for everyone to know, applications are coming in to secure docks, so the dock applications. They were a little bit slower this year versus, uh, last year, uh, you know, and we cut this off on December 31st. Although we did notice that for the first six days of January, a good amount came in. So we just think it's a matter of December versus January, we believe that's going to catch up. In fact, we've already seen it because some of the, several of the larger boats, which are the larger pieces of the revenue, um, they filled in the applications and sent in the money, so good to know where we are. So just for total numbers, 2023, it was 299,419 versus 315,975. So just for everyone to have a sense of where we are. And December in general, um, on the water was quiet. We did have some commercial scalpers out there, we, and there were actually some sailboats that were out in December. People took advantage of the mild weather. We see the wind tonight, hopefully no one's out there in the wind tonight. But the contracts for the docks, uh, do need to be in by January 14th. Uh, there were some marine patrols in December. There was a ski jet that was missing, so they went out and took care of that. And there was, uh, a sailboater that while people were off duty, you know, required, um, some help, and so they went out and took care of that. So just to give you, give a sense that even in the month of December, um, they can be busy. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. Do I have a motion to accept the department reports?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Korsch, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. So carried. Uh, before I get to public comments, I want to recognize that Susan Mead is here from, yes. From the Sag Harbor Partnership, I would like to make.
Better than a good leg and a bad check.
Outdrove.
Susan Mead and I'm pro-president of the Sag Harbor Partnership with Jane Young, who is also on the Zoom. There were others that were going to come tonight, but I think the loss of electricity and the weather discouraged them. Uh, this is the last check for the, uh, for our boat that we, we raised money for. Uh, it's for 17,285, our total was approximately 100,000. And in the last three years, we presented the village with approximately, uh, close to 400,000 for the park. And we raised, uh, 1.5 for the purchase of Steinbeck House, um, in private dollars. I just want to say, none of this would have happened in the last few years without the, you guys, the trustees, the town Southampton, and most dearly Fred Thiel. So thank you very much, and I think Jane would probably like to say something, and I'm gonna give you the check and then stumble home.
Thank you, Susan.
No further comment needed, it was a privilege and an honor. And just, uh, working on that fireboat project and just seeing the difference that it made and the uplifted spirits, because I think, um, it was a little bit of a David and Goliath story when we got started and you all did a lot of extra funding too. But, um, there was, I think, some skepticism and we just had that wonderful party, it brought the village together. And, um, the spirits were high and we can't wait to crack a bottle of champagne on the boat next summer.
It's like the plan. Thank you, thank you, Jane, thank you and thank the partnership for all the efforts. We can figure it out. That was a good party, rock the boat.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that, thank you, Jane. So that leaves us now a fifteen-minute, uh, public comment section on the reports of the, uh, mayor and trustees and on the committees that reported. So anybody would like to comment? Yes, ma'am, could you come forward and state your name? Three minutes, just so we have, get everybody a chance to speak that wants to speak.
I'll be quicker than three minutes, I'm Susie Oliver. I just had a question because the presentation having to do with water access was very specific and very clear. And then there was a kind of an afterthought where somebody said, what it sounded like to me, they said, the, the Long Island Avenue access, how it would be called, it could get rolled into that. Maybe I misunderstood.
Let me explain, um, last month, we had a presentation on Long Island Avenue and Water Street. And we also had brought to this board our intent to look at the intersection of Jermaine and Main Street. As well as, you know, POSAC wants to look at, um, both Silly Farm and Haven Beach. So we asked as part of the presentation last month to put together an RFPs with, for both traffic and environmental studies to bring to this board. These are all the things that would be considered in that RFP, um, to bring to the board. So the presentation that Drew made today would be added for, request for proposal, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So from engineering and tra, engineering consultants and traffic consultants to do an assessment of those properties.
Why, they just feel a little, I'm just very, um, attentive to this matter of having to do with the jitney stop and it was at Bridge Street. So I just want to be sure that, I, I guess I was confused by the idea that it would be merged somehow.
The assessment, the studies will be, will, it's, it'll be a long process, it'll take quite a bit of time to pull this together. But it's the ideas to bring both traffic consultants and environmental consultants to look at these properties to do assessments for potential solutions.
Which point might be what you need to, uh, to call in mitigation of the runoff.
Yes, among other things, yes.
That's why.
And water quality.
Connecting the docks.
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? John? Okay.
Yes, yes.
But, uh, John, our here thirty-three shot wrote, just a couple of really brief comments about the water access points and, and, you know, generally in favor of that, but, but I find myself being sort of like the old guy here. Uh, and, and remembering things from the, from, 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 from the past. I, I remember, for instance, sitting around a table here four or five years ago on discussions of the update to the LWRP, where we looked at, at water access points and there was discussion as to what, you know, to, to do with that various issues. And I have no idea what happened to that update of the LWRP, which was started in 2016. And, and I only bring it up because I, I hopefully we're not duplicating. And I know we were paying Nelson Pope and Voorhees for, for work on LWRP update. So I, I'm just throwing that out as a, as a question.
I can answer that question, we're not duplicating the LWRP. There is actually another advisory committee in process for the LWRP update, there's been two in place since 2020. But this is, this is consistent with the LWRP, what we're proposing? Not duplicative of it.
Well, I just, hopefully that's the case. The, the other, the other quick comment was that when this was discussed in the past, uh, one of the questions that came up was, who is this access for? And the word residents was, was mentioned a few times here. And, and when this came up previously, there, there was some opposition to it, to, to putting signage, to putting maps to show these access points on the fear of neighbors, that this would bring in people from outside the village, non-residents, who would be using this as access points, traffic, parking issues, et cetera. So I'm just throwing out that, that question because I know it was discussed before and it was a reason for not going ahead with, with the kind of publicity for those spots that, that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Good evening, board, I have a letter and I'd like to read.
It's Kate Plum, by the way.
Thanks.
I was gonna say Richie Sky.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Definitely off the record, I would say.
Off the record, you're on the record.
You're on the record, you're being recorded.
Well, you certainly have credos doing what you do and services, it can't be easy to do just what, that's what Amy said. To do what you do, you take care of this village, it's more complicated. But, you know, you see, it's a good thing, what you're doing and we appreciate it. Anyway, to get a little better, dear Sag Harbor Village, please. In response to environmental challenges that affect the health and well-being of our community and to enhance the resilience and sustainability of the village, with great foresight, the Village of Sag Harbor officially established an Environmental Advisory Committee, EAC, by resolution on July 24th, 2019. Charged with the mission to advise village executives and village residents on issues and policies that affect our local environment as well as the broader environment, the EAC has moved vigorously and effectively in leading this charge. With its membership comprised of concerned and dedicated volunteers, meeting monthly, EAC members as individuals and in small teams have aggravated, uh, aggravated.
Aggregated.
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 And synthesize research and expertise across a wide range of issues. The EAC has embarked on a number of important initiatives such as climate smart community certification, which led to energy use benchmarking and LED streetlights, composting, a helium balloon ban, energy transition, the leaf blower law and the fertilizer and leaf blower flyer with support from the Sag Harbor Partnership, the pesticide free campaign through SOFO Trees Preservation and the Sag Harbor Water Quality Initiative, among other significant environmental projects. Going forward, it would be beneficial for the EAC to continue, continue to work with the Climate Smart Communities Task Force and other volunteer committees like the LWRP and the Open Spaces Committees to help identify ways in which we can protect our many natural resources in the village and importantly, codify those protections. Having achieved a meaningful level of accomplishment and organizational maturity, it is appropriate that the EAC engages with the village officials at this inflection point, helping to articulate priorities and provide village policy guidance. We believe that Sag Harbor, distinctive and special, should be a role modeling leader in the protection of the environment and we look forward in partnership to the realization of this important role. Sincerely, the son, Scott Blulorn, Josephine Devenza, Devenza Card, Mayor Deora, Mary Ann, Mary Ann Eddy, Derek Galen, Aleister Hawker, Michael Merzke, Jaffe, Kathleen McKay, Joe Missnicki, Ken Plum, Eileen Rosenberg, Shannon Richards, Hillary Fair. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
And you skipped over Alex Matheson.
Yeah. Any, anybody else who'd like to, Anthony?
Hello, uh, Anthony Romano, Sixty-eight, New Street. Sorry, I arrived a little late, so I, this was already discussed at the beginning of the meeting, let me know, but I had a question. At the, um, at the affordable housing workshop a couple of weeks ago, uh, this is sort of brought to, um, everyone's attention that I guess we had received funding or something for a comprehensive plan. Thirty updates on that?
I can give you a very brief update, uh, we were granted, top of my head, about $170,000 for a project that's, uh, expected to cost about 198, the village has to pay 10% local fee. We are in the process and will be in the process of negotiating a contract, the, the sequence of events as we get the award. We'll negotiate a contract based on our application, I can give you a copy of the application because that outlines what our intent was. Will negotiate a contract based on our application. I can give you a copy of the application because that outlines what our intent was. New York State will have some input on how we spend that money and we'll have a meeting. We just had a similar meeting about Haven's Beach. This week with New York State and they had some comments about how we would proceed. One of the things the state insists on is an advisory or a steering committee that's made up of the community. That will be part of that effort. And as soon as we get more information from New York State. Then we'll know what the requirements are and there'll be a lot of public, I mean, very generally speaking. Public outreach, public meetings, probably online surveys and this will very much want to be a bottom up effort. So I'm not sure if that answers your question for now, or if you have something more specific.
It does, I mean, it, it's good that there's going to be a lot of public outreach and all that stuff. I think my concern here is timing. And how long all of this is going to take, both to kickstart it and then the actual process of, of forming the comprehensive plan and then adopting. The legislative legislation or whatever the proposals are for your legislation. Because, you know, there's talk about, you know, we're have to postpone any affordable housing legislation. Until this comprehensive plan comes forward and potentially other important legislation would, would by rights have to be postponed. But following the same logic, even this tree legislation that's coming up. So, you know, time is not really on our side here with affordable housing and a lot of other issues. So if this ends up being a multi-year process, it's almost like, what's the point? Because it's already going to be too late.
I think that, you know, we have already done things on the, on, the board has passed. Certain local laws and resolutions. We, we haven't stopped working. We continue to work. We reduced the square footage of the apartments that were allowed. So we're not, you know, if we have objections to things that are opposed, we're, we're going to work through them and see, you know, find solutions. I, I'm not going to stop working for the benefit of the, of the village residents because.
That can be also part, part of these discussions we're talking about.
You know, I mean, I just think it's, people are going to use this comprehensive plan as a, as a delaying tactic. For any new legislation that somebody doesn't like. This is going to happen, that's the way things are. Going piecemeal through the affordable housing, which is fine, it's perfectly good way to, to do it. I can see this being. This be, this coming up is an issue.
Do you suggest we don't do an affordable, or we don't do a comprehensive plan?
No, I'm not, not suggesting that. I'm just saying that I'm just, maybe I'm just kind of warning you that this is going to, going to come up as we're going through. I mean, I think again, to try to move with some haste on this, I mean.
What we're doing.
This whole comprehensive plan thing, you know, we've been talking about it for years and.
What we're in the process of right now, we have been, is folk trying to get our small government focused. And to run it in an efficient way, so that when we get to actually doing this, going through this planning process. We're focused all together, or we, we have at least groups that are focused together. We're not, we haven't stopped, you, you'll see, there's, there's local laws and legislation that's on the docket tonight. So we're not stopping doing what we're doing. I think that what you, what you're focusing on is the fact that at that workshop, it was brought up that before we do anything with that proposed. Change, that we look at the comprehensive plan before we make changes to zoning, so to speak. Now, I have an opinion on things, I'm not going to voice them tonight. Come to the housing.
Workshop.
Workshop.
End of January.
I'll tell you exactly what I'm thinking and I don't want to take too much time away from this board meeting. But I don't think that this board or anybody on this board wants to stop functioning because we're waiting for a comprehensive plan. Right now, we're trying to focus, get everybody focused to when that process comes about, that it's an efficient one.
I, I can see your concerns, Tony, but there's no other way to do it. We got the money two weeks ago or a month ago.
We've been looking for this for, I've been, this is my seventh year on the board. We've been talking about this.
And I don't want to sound like I don't want to sound negative about it. I mean, I think it's an important thing, but it's just like, you know. I, coming to these meetings for as long as I have, you know, you just start to kind of get a little bit exasperated by the process.
And the comprehensive planning process is an important process that we want to go through, we need to go through. But we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I've said this multiple times, we can do both at once. Then we will do both at once.
One other thing I want to talk about a little more hopeful here, got the sewer expansion. I think it's great, all for it, moving forward with that. I think one, I just have a little bit of a logistical question here. Kind of about what the process is for, for telling people, you know, or, or. How people hook up to the system once it's installed. Is that something that you're going to have to write into legislation saying, okay, you've got X amount of years? And you, you can have to pay this amount or something like that to do that? How is that allowed to work or is it too early to kind of?
I'd be happy to talk very briefly about it, but also happy to talk to you one-on-one offline. It's very complicated. We have a meeting this week with Liz. We're going to talk about the legislation, legislative aspects of this. A lot of the funding we received includes hooking people up. There's two distinct areas with two distinct systems. One is gravity fed, one is low pressure. We're talking about eighty-five, ninety houses altogether. If you can get a copy of this, of the master plan, it's not up here, but downstairs. It, it's all in, and a lot of it is in there. And the master plan, we hope to adopt next month. As, as part of the village, a village. But I'd be really happy, we're taking everybody's time up. It could be, it could be, let's have, let's have a coffee. Actually, alcohol is even more conducive to talking about sewers.
Anybody else? I think we're pretty close to our fifteen minute limit, but does anybody else like to speak? Do we have a hand raised?
Douglas Neve, two forty-four Madison. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Trustees, I just want to congratulate you all. On the tremendous effort on the sewage plan. It's, it's really great to see. That amount of money and that amount of support coming in and, you know, I'm conscious that a lot of these meetings where. You, you get criticism rather than praise and I think, yeah, you're, you're really a tremendous effort and. I can only imagine how much hard work has gone in over many years, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, that'll bring.
I, sorry, one comment that I left out on Haven's Beach, we had a meeting with New York State on the grant. They were very insistent as the, that we work only on the watershed and not the park use on the beach. So we're not going to be talking about, in this project, we're not going to be talking about the beach or the use. We're talking about where the water is coming from and what we can do to mitigate it. I just thought that was important.
Thank you, Aiden.
Thanks.
Okay, so that brings us to the introduction part of the meeting. We have a resolution to schedule a public hearing on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. To amend local law amending village code three hundred, attachment two, table of dimensional regulations to limit. The gross floor area for business establishment occupancy at square feet. To two thousand square feet in the office district. You want to talk about this briefly, counsel or?
This is, um, yeah, this is an amendment to amend the table of dimensional regulations in the code, in the zoning code. And it would, there's currently no limit on the maximum gross floor area per business. Establishment or occupancy for square footage in OD, so this would establish a two thousand. Square foot maximum gross floor area for business establishment.
I wonder, I was curious as to why that was never discussed in the past or?
It just said not applicable in the code when I looked at it, when we first talked about this. Two thousand is the maximum size allowed in the business district. In the VB. There was nothing in, in the code table. Not A, and it's been like that for years.
That's part of, I think, the uniqueness of Sag Harbor is that we've managed to limit the square footage to keep the character of the village. So I'm surprised that that was something that.
Is the, excuse me, please wait to be recognized. Couple of questions, did the two thousand square foot you said you got for the VB?
That we just took the VB, yeah. There's, there's a minimum of eight hundred, maximum of two thousand in the code. There's lots of pre-existing non-conforming. Establishments.
Couple of questions, I think that, so the OD was created in the two thousand nine planning study. That's when this piece was written.
I just need, before we get any further, I need a motion to introduce this.
Oh, oh, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by trustee Corr, seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, it's an introduction, so good, sorry, let me.
No, not at all, that's good.
Just follow procedure.
So we're just borrowing the two thousand from another district. My concern is that this, there was a planning study behind this. Not that I necessarily agree or disagree with it, but shouldn't there be a planning support behind a change? Is one, and then what would be the effect on any pending applications to this? I assume it wouldn't apply.
I was, yeah, I would, I would say we're introducing it now. And it's going to be open for public hearing next month, so between now and then, we should probably consult.
Kathy's looking at the prior planning study and to see what the history is and also to see if there needs to be some evaluation on this and.
Maybe it needs to be less known, so maybe.
Yeah, this number just came from. Wha- what would be the upper limit under the current code as it's, as it exists tonight? What is the upper limit that a store could be in the office district under not applicable?
Well, super stores are prohibited. That's anything with a retail component that's ten thousand square feet. In size and that's really the square footage of the building, not the business establishment. So you'd have to look at that. I think that would be a guidance that's prohibited in every zoning district.
And in your experiences, a not applicable, a normal thing that you would see in the dimensional table?
Well, it depends what this, what the study would say or the basis for it, you know, because it's, it's also in. Our twenty, obviously it's not applicable there, our resort hotel, it's not applicable there and in waterfront.
But there is a list of about thirty-five or forty types of businesses, like there's. Retail, different retail stores are, they're, they're basically retail, there's a list of retail stores.
Permitted use.
Permitted use.
Yeah.
So you're saying it's not applicable on waterfront, the waterfront overlay as well?
No, just, that's not, that's not addressed, but it's waterfront, just waterfront, it's different than waterfront.
Okay, sorry.
All right, so we're introducing it tonight and then we have a public hearing on, at the February Board of Trustees meeting, so we'll do some more research on this.
Yes.
Okay, so that brings us to a public hearing, we have a continued public hearing. This is a local law amending village code three hundred dash nine point four, section D. Which is fences, walls and gates to increase the height of permitted gates. Do you want to do a quick?
This is, yes, this was on for public hearing the last two meetings and it's, we prepared a resolution of adoption for this local law. If, if the board wants to move forward with it, it's amending fences, walls and gates such as. Four in the village code, it's addressing driveway gates within the historic district. They shall not exceed four feet in height above natural grade. And then it allows outside of the historic district, different regulations to up to six feet in height above natural grade. And this is provided that these gates are a minimum of fifty percent of the gate materials opaque. I'm sorry, non-opaque or open and that the gate posts for the driveways are set back at least eighteen feet from the edge of. Street pavement to allow for cars to pull in and stay out of the street. Then other entry gates, we address that for walkway gates, just to make sure we, we emphasize that those are going to remain. A max of four feet in height above natural grade.
Do we need a motion to continue the hearing or is it?
No, it's ready for adoption. You can make a motion to close the hearing and then make.
Let's, does anybody from the public wish to, yeah, Mary Ann?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I haven't studied this, so really speaking from ignorance. But when I heard about it and I heard you read it just now, it just made me think about driving through Southampton. And you have these hedges over my head and then you have gates over your head and then you have more hedges. And everything is behind it. You don't see the houses, you don't see how people live. And maybe that's what they want, but it becomes like a walled city, so I would just have us think about.
There are two elements to this that contradict that. One. It's only the lower four feet can be, can be opaque. The top two feet has to be. Also, the gate itself has to be, is it fifteen feet back from the? Eighteen feet back from the barb.
And in the historic district, there's still only.
Still four feet.
Four feet, it's the same thing, so that's not changing.
And, and taking into your thought, and we really did think about this. Because we want to maintain Sag Harbor being a walking village and people being able to. See the different types of houses, you know, neighborhood to neighborhood as opposed. Exactly, so that's why we kept it four feet in the historic district. And just the non-historic district, you'll be able to go to six feet, but you need to be able to have visibility. And that's where we're seeing fifty percent of it, it's, it's going to predom- predomin- predominantly be, you know, spindles and. And this really came about, there are, I think it's over a dozen houses that have these six feet. Outside of the historic district and applicants have been asking for variances. And so we were weighing some of that as well, so in order to have a code that can be maintained and not. Asking for lots of variances, but still have the historic district viewed differently than the non-historic district. So that was the thought process that we went through.
Okay, well, this makes me feel a lot better. One question I have, thank you, is why do people want it? And that's a question, I mean, this isn't, the deer in my neighborhood have no problem clearing six feet. So I don't think it could be seen as a deterrent for deer, so again, I think it's a privacy issue.
Honestly, what we heard from applicants who were coming through. It was a combination of safety when there was an increase in cars being stolen and this way, driveway. They could have the higher gate in their driveway as well as they did talk about deer. And they did talk about keeping their dogs and so it, those were the conversations that were presented. You are right, deer are everywhere.
Rather she eight feet?
Anyway, thank you so much.
Have any, any other public, John?
Minor problem with wording of this is that the, for all waterfront properties, the front yard is the waterside. So you have whole streets in the village where it's the backyard that's on the road. And, and I don't think you're really meaning to, on one side of the street, for instance, have one height requirement. Now, the other side of the street have the other height requirement. Because on the properties that are on the waterside, it's the backyard and the property is the other side of the street. It's the front yard.
Fair point.
So, so I think that there needs to be a slight correction on the, on the language that, so, so that instead of saying.
For waterfront.
Well, but instead of saying front yard, it should say street side yard or something of that sort, so that it clarifies that.
That can be problematic, John, if you're on a corner lot with two streets. So we'll let the village council noodle that one.
I have side yard with a street and, and I have backyard with a street. But I think a little bit of.
With the front, in other words, determining what exactly, in other words, the wording should determine exactly what the front yard is, because if you're on the water.
I think a lot of it, this was raised and it's a really good point, but I think it was cured by the fact that it addresses driveway gates.
So it's, it applies to driveways.
Yeah.
You're not going to have the driveway.
Right, so it's not, it's not.
What I'm saying is that it's, it's, it's the. Because you have a difference between the regulation on the, on the, on the, on the front yard and other gates. You'd have on one side of the street, a different regulation on the street and on the other side of the street. Because on one side of the street is the front yard, on the other side of the street is the backyard.
We got it.
So that, that just needs to be clarified.
Understood, thank you, John.
I think it could be easily clarified by a few, few words, but.
But we don't have to solve that here tonight, but thank you, John.
But your point is fair.
I, I'm happy to help with the words if necessary, but.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Any other, yes, we have somebody with their hand raised, okay?
Hi, good evening. I had a question. There, was there any dimensional width for the gate?
No, it would be the, it would be understood that would be the width of either the walkway. No, it would be the, it would be understood that would be the width of either the walkway or the driveway.
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah, I was wondering, because I think it would be rather odd looking to have a six-foot gate and then have four-foot fencing. But I guess that's a personal preference, and I happen to agree with Mary Ann about the rationale for it. I think I had questioned it last time, I mean, deer, you're obviously not a problem, and I don't think a six-foot fence is going to prevent car theft. But I understand the rationale of compromising for those people that ask for variances. A little bit for me, the tail wagging the dog, but I get it, I, I, the village has to function, so. Uh, but I was wondering about the width of the gate allowed. So I, yeah, I'm assuming it's not going to be, you know, someone maybe taking advantage and saying, well, the gate can be, I don't know, ten feet wide or something like that.
But I, it has to meet the driveway's width.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Also regulated in the code.
And while we're talking about that, Mary Ann Eddy, ninety-six Hampton Street, we might want to say something about the spindles. So that they're like twelve inches on center or something, so it's not like spindle, 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 and effectively having a, a solid fence.
Well, we, we're saying fifty percent has to be able to be opaque, so you need to be able to see through it.
Eileen, are you finished?
Yes, I am, thank you.
All right.
So the code says fifty percent open?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's fifty percent open, thank you.
So any, anybody else?
Lisa Desmore.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, good evening, Mayor Godella, Deputy Mayor Hay, and trustees. Um, Lisa Stenson Desmore is president of the Sag Harbor Hills Homeowners Improvement Association, seventeen Hillside Drive West in the village. Just wanted to confirm that this new local law will apply to gates and fences uh to be installed going forward.
Once it's effective, after it's filed with the state of New York. The Secretary of State, it's like.
Okay.
Within five days, right? I.
Is that it? Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So I think that in light of uh John's comments and some of the other comments, we should probably. I don't think we're ready to adopt this yet until we.
Just adjust that wording, or if the wording will.
So a motion to adjourn till next month?
Okay.
So moved.
Seconded, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What, the uh local laws adjourn till next month? That brings us to a local law to create Village Code, Chapter two fifty-three, tree preservation. And that, I believe we've, we had some other changes that were made, that trustees opined.
Yeah, this, this cannot be, this is a continued public hearing, it's been on for public hearings since September. This, um, there've been some minor changes made to this local law based on some of the recommendations from um. Um, Ms. Rosenberg and, and Ms. Young, and also from board members. And so um it's not ready for adoption tonight.
Right.
Um, because it wasn't in final form, so it, it has to be continued to the next meeting. And that gives everybody a chance to look at it again, and just make sure everyone's okay with those final changes. And hopefully it would be on for adoption at the next meeting. We have heard from the Sub County Planning Commission, we heard from Nelson Pope and Voorhees, and we're ready to move forward administratively anyway.
Okay, do we have any public comments on this? Anthony. Yes, Anthony?
Sorry, again. Um, okay, and maybe this is in this, I didn't, and I just can see it, but uh at the last meeting, there was some discussion about amending this uh law to um. Make things a little bit easier for sub, for an individual property owner who just wants to take down a single tree.
Anthony.
Is, is that, if you're.
Yeah, if you'd look at um, it, it's spread out a little bit, but you know, you're good. Approval authority is on page two, the village of Sag Harbor Building Inspector upon consultation with an ISA certified arborist where required. Will have approval authority for tree removal and building permanent applications. Then you jump to page three, tree removal permit. Permit granted pursuant to the requirements of this chapter, which allows removal of one or more trees. Um, and then you jump to page four, which is really where it is, the last sentence in the first paragraph. Building permanent application shall require the submission of a tree removal permit at the discretion of the approval authority. Um, the approval authority shall make its determination based on an inspection of the subject property. By an ISA certified arborist when necessary, and the information submitted as part of this application, so it's. Um, council, is that right, is that the provision that provides discretion?
Yes. There, it, there is, there is, uh, that is what provides discretion, and also it's, there's unregulated activities of two fifty-three-three. Um, which don't require a permit at all, which is removal of a dead, diseased, or damaged tree. Uh, removal of a tree uh in an emergency condition where it's necessary for projection or preservation of life or property. Um, and removal of trees in connection with Village of Sag Harbor authorized activities. And um removal of any tree less than twelve, well, with a D V H of less than twelve inches on existing or proposed single family dwelling properties.
The point is, the building inspector can okay it.
Okay, so in other words, let's say I have a tree, I think it might be fifteen inches in diameter. Uh, I don't know exactly what the process is, I, what's, what, what do I do? I go to the building department, I talk to the building inspector.
And he decides.
And he says, okay, I can see that this tree is obviously about to fall on your house, go ahead and take it down, or he says, okay, this is a little more complicated, you know, for the whole process.
Yes.
And that doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to just fit into the categories, it's, it's a, in danger of falling down.
It is a risk.
It's at the building, the department's discretion.
Let's say I have a fifteen-inch uh diameter tree, and I just want some more light in my backyard. I can, that can still be at the building inspector's.
Discretion.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all, thanks.
Any other comments? Uh, motion to adjourn this till next month?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corr, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the local law is adjourned till February. So that brings us to discussion items. We have the Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association, there is seventy-fifth anniversary party, which will be July of twenty twenty-five. We have anybody here that's?
Lisa's on, um.
Okay. Hello, Lisa?
Good evening again.
Yes. Would you like to speak about the event?
Oh, certainly, uh, be happy to, and also want to share, um, in person is Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association. Board member and committee member, uh, Kimberly Taylor, um, Padell, um, excuse me. And we also have a committee members, Jennifer Sa Gray, as well as Robin Duncan Brooks. And Olivia White, um, participating on Zoom. And we uh request the trustees' approval. For our Sag Harbor Hills Improvement Association to host a seventy-fifth anniversary celebration at Havens Beach. On Saturday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Um, in the evening, as described in our, a letter of interest dated October thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Which was submitted um to the village for your review and consideration. Our association did host a fiftieth anniversary celebration at Havens Beach, and we welcome the opportunity to do so again. Uh, next year, um, to celebrate our. Community that we have nurtured and sustained uh for just about seventy-five years, as well as um supported this beloved village of ours.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak about this event, or? Well, certainly has my support, so.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I have one question.
You have a question?
Question about the time, it's, the event's going to go until eleven P M. at night, is that correct?
Yes, that is our hope, yes.
And will the DJ be going till eleven P M. at night?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Will the DJ be going till eleven P M. at night?
That is our hope, yes.
Okay.
We would begin uh the breakdown uh promptly at eleven.
You better hang with the party, because you'll be sleeping.
We tend to try to end the, the music portion or the noise portion at ten o'clock, like we do with the carnival, we, we subside at ten o'clock, so. If, that would be something I would ask you to try to comply with, if possible.
Ten P M.?
Yes.
For the music, but the party goes on till eleven, for the DJ.
Okay. All right.
You can start flicking on the lights at ten, that'd be great.
Okay, do we need a motion to approve, or?
This is just a letter of intent, they have to come back with.
Okay.
Okay.
So you certainly have my support, and I believe the board's support, so.
And it's exciting, seventy-five years.
Yes.
Thank you very much, we're, we're very exciting, and our, our planning is underway, and we will submit all of the requisite permits.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Kate, can I just ask too, that when these come up, last month, you distributed to us as part of our package, the event schedule, calendar?
It's here. I got one in front.
Can we, um, oh, sorry, it wasn't in my electronic. And, question, is our, this, is our event schedule separate from Lieutenant Drake, your schedule, do you work off of our schedule? Okay, perfect. And so I noticed that this was open on that schedule, that date was open for Havens Beach, so I guess then when they submit the application, you'll fill that date in and.
It will stay on there.
Awesome, thank you.
Can we assume that everything that's on this event's schedule has been reviewed by?
Everything.
Ever, by the police department?
Goes to the police department, to the mayor, as well as.
Before it makes it here?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, that brings us to Peconic Estuary watershed. Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Eddy, ninety-six Hampton Street, um, so kind of amusing, you started with signs, you're going to end with signs. This is a gift, um, it's not a problem, we're not asking you to. But I think in today's age and attitude and environment, we're supposed to know who's giving you a gift, and why they're giving you a gift. So maybe a little tiny bit of history to tell you about where this gift has come from, mine. So the Peconic Estuary, next slide. Um, there are currently twenty-eight estuaries around the United States, on the Atlantic, the Pacific, the Gulf, Puerto Rico. And they've been designated as estuaries of national significance. These are the local programs that are part of the National Estuary Program. And it's a little bit of a big deal, actually, in certain circles. Um, the Peconic Estuary was recognized and became a part of the National Estuary Program in nineteen ninety-two. Um, they were the last one to be designated as a significant estuary. And each nest, each estuary focuses on a study area that includes the estuary and the watershed that drains into the estuary. Next slide. So in twenty fifteen, the Peconic Estuary Partnership, and that's the organization that's responsible for reporting to the EPA. About their care and feeding and well-being and health of the estuary. They recognize the similar success of intermunicipal water quality coalitions on Long Island. And they initiated the creation of the Peconic Estuary Protection. Okay, confusing, but that's the way it is. And it has representation of all five towns around the Peconic Estuary. So that includes South Hall, Riverhead, Shelter Island, East Hampton, Southampton, excuse me. Um, and the committee focuses on efforts to comply with the Clean Water Act. And New York State Stormwater Regulations, which lovingly refer to as MS four, which we may be hearing more about later this year. Um, PEP is dedicated to achieving improvements in water quality and habitat, and habitats on the Peconic Estuary. Um, by leveraging resources and a strong connection to the PEP. So, next slide. So this is the sign. This is very similar to the sign, the metal sign that's over there at Havens Beach. It's alive and swell, it's in good shape, the color is vibrant, the thing is sturdy, it withstands the seventy, seventy mile per hour winds. This is the one that is for Sag Harbor, and it talks about the um, the watershed. And when you see the insert there, which just shows the orange that tracks around the North Fork and the South Fork, that's all the watershed. So any drop of water, or anything that you pour on your lawn, in that orange area, ends up in the Peconic Estuary, in the Peconic Bay. So. That is the sign that we have, the text, which you certainly can't read, but I'll give you some highlights, it's both in English and Spanish. It says, the watershed is an area of land where all water, including surface water, streams, rainwater, groundwater, drains into a common body of water. And estuaries are body of water where fresh water from land and salt water and the ocean mix together. So you can see that this estuary goes all the way out to the Atlantic Ocean to Block Island. Estuaries are the most productive ecosystems for aquatic plant and animal life. And they're covered, this estuary, ours, covers a hundred and fifty-five thousand acres. It contains a hundred bays, harbors, and bayments, and tributaries. A large variety of animals, fish, shellfish, et cetera. Um, and then, of course, part of the issue, and we've talked about it, how many times have we talked about stormwater here? A lot, so it's a stormwater that carries pollutants such as motor oil, pet waste, excess fertilizers, et cetera, et cetera. Into the Peconic Estuary. So, next slide. Next slide. Um, so this isn't exactly a four-H project, this is done by this gentleman called Paul Silver. And he's worked in all the revolutionary parks, he's done a lot of signage out in Montauk, here's something from Manhasset Bay. He did not design the um, the sign at Havens Beach, but his work is very high quality. Um, next slide. And out of all of the uh members of the Peconic Estuary Protection Committee, Shelter Island was first and foremost to get their sign made and mounted. So this is Shelter Island, and it's right there on the shores of Fresh Pond. Uh, the next one up, well, maybe not, we might be the next ones up, depending on what you think, but Southampton is going to, you talked about signage at um Round Pond. Southampton is going to take their sign, they're going to talk about rain gardens, and their sign is going to be there at the entrance to the series of rain gardens that we down to, to Round Pond. Next slide. This is one of the questions that I would ask you, because we've got the sign covered, we know what the sign looks like, but there's various ways that you can mount this sign. I think the one that Shelter Island has is the one that's on the left, I mean, the height can vary, you can decide on the height. You know, after it's here, and you see how it looks like in situ, but there's that possibility. Or there's the one on the right, which is like a flat sign. So. Is it possible that you could make a decision and then be willing on this, or is this something that you want to talk about?
Mary Ann, where do you plan to put it?
Uh, that's up to you.
What do you, what do you suggest?
Well. I think I like Long Wharf until I walked out there and there aren't any cars, and all of a sudden, it's very prominent. Maybe it would be all right, maybe it wouldn't, I think the second choice would be Windmill Beach, but. I, I don't really have a strong feeling about that, I know some people feel we have too much signage.
I prefer Windmill Beach.
Me too.
I like Long Wharf as.
Yeah, I would.
It's clean, um, I think Windmill Beach would be a great location for it. And especially as time goes by, and we get the walkway in and everything else.
Right, it would tie in with us.
Yeah.
Visible.
Um.
I think the flat, I.
The flat one, the, the problem with flat one, people are going to put stuff on it.
Yeah.
It's going to end up being a. Use it as a table.
It'll be a table.
If you do, if you do slightly tilt it.
Yeah, I mean, I like it tilted.
Forty-five.
But it's got a rim all the way around it, so it was.
It's going to catch.
So you drink one side off.
Yeah. God forbid. My old fashioned.
So we agree, in agreement on Windmill?
Yeah, I like Windmill.
Absolutely.
And then, and then the slop, the slope sign.
Yeah, I love the, I love the execution that you showed us from Shelter Island.
Yeah.
It looks really nice.
I thought that was super clean.
Looks really nice.
Right. What is the material, what's the?
The sign itself?
Yeah.
It's made out of metal, I don't.
Okay, so it's a printed metal, that's good.
It's the same thing that, the same people are executing the sign that executed the sign um at Havens Beach.
Mm-hmm.
And all those um signs that talk about the previous payers along, um. Bay Street, same people, it's really good quality.
What size is this, justice, it's about?
It's a little bit more than twenty-four by thirty-six.
Okay.
Slightly bigger than the one.
Outdoors, that's not intrusive, that's fine.
As long as it's placed in an area that doesn't, we took out those bushes and.
Yeah.
You have a clear view now, yeah, we want to keep the view shed, we don't want to.
Bring it closer to the bridge. You know, down that way away, because we have the.
No, then nobody will see it, why bother? I'm sorry.
There'll be, there'll be a walking, there'll be a walking path there.
No, I mean, I mean, that's fine, because we have the windmill, we have.
We can come back, we can come back, we can come back, we can come back with places.
Yeah.
We can come back for places.
We've come back for places, but we're gonna be somewhere there, okay.
Okay.
All right.
We can all go stand out there and see what feels good.
I want, we install that the concrete supports can be beneath the soil, beneath the grade, so that it just looks like very clean supports coming right out.
Coming right up out of the ground.
Right up out of the ground, okay, this is great, thanks for doing this, I think it's really, and is it, it's in two languages?
It is, Spanish and English.
Great.
And thanks for all the smart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that was a lot of work, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to our action items. We have the resolution to accept Sag Harbor Fire Department Service Award Program Beneficiary Designation Form, can I have a motion?
I'm in.
Motion by trustee Corus, second, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? So moved. We have a resolution to support Kimberly Barber and Kate Rossi Snook. Of Back to the Base to install spat-on-shell oysters along John Steinbeck Waterfront Park.
I'm in.
Second. Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
These same folks that were doing the.
Yes.
Great doing the.
Yeah.
Anyone opposed?
Nope.
So carried. Resolution authorizing settlement, we did, we already?
This is the a trip and fall.
Okay.
Recommended, insurance carrier is paying half, as well as the co-defendants are paying the other half.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? So carried, we have another resolution authorizing settlement. This is another trip and fall incident?
No. Thirty-six Florida holdings LLC versus Phillips and Sag Harbor.
This is recommendation by the Harvard Committee, correct, they accept it?
Recommended by Harvard Committee and outside counsel.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Have a resolution, January twenty twenty-four, to approve the service listing of the Sag Harbor Fire Department Service Award Program. Have a motion?
So.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution, January twenty twenty-four, authorizing mayor to sign Harbor Master Agreement with the Village of North Haven.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Resolution approving appointment of Adam D. Gregorio as part-time police officer. I'll make the motion. We have a second, seconded by trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Authorization to accept November twenty twenty-three back bank reconciliations and collateral reports.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Authorization for the clerk to advertise tentative assessment role when received. Grievance day for February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, from one to five P M. Tax sale for March. Twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at ten A M. Budget schedule for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Village Code. Chapter two thirty-five dash four, snow and ice sidewalks, that's a notice. And Village Code two sixty-five dash forty-three, parking during snowfall, do I have a motion?
I'll so moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, second.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so carried. Approval to set date for time. For annual village election on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, between the hours of six A M. And nine P M. At fire headquarters on Brick Hill Road, declaring vacancies, and to advertise all notices for village elections.
I'll move that.
Motion by trustee Corus, second. Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Anthony Hoggan requests permission to operate a commercial charter from Marine Park, slip twenty-three, for the twenty twenty-four voting season.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane.
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Joseph Labrozi Junior requests permission to operate a commercial charter from Doc B. Twenty-seven. For the twenty twenty-four voting season.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Corus, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Ellen DeGuardio, DeGuardi, excuse me, President of the Sag Harbor Chamber of Commerce, requests permission to have the thirteenth annual Harbor Frost. On Saturday, February third, twenty twenty-four. From one P M. To six P M. Along Main Street, Long Wharf, Windmill Beach, and Steinbeck Waterfront Park. Events activities include ice sculpting, live music at restaurants, outdoor games, polar bear plunge, and fireworks. Lastly, requesting to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf, Route one fourteen. And Mash Hashemit Park. From January twenty, twenty twenty-four, to February third, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I'm a bit.
Motion by deputy mayor, hey, a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Andrew Bloadon, Chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests permission to hold their annual department picnic. On Sunday, August eighteenth. Twenty twenty-four at Haven's Beach. From twelve P M. To five P M. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Andrew Bloadon, Chief of the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests permission to hold their annual carnival fundraiser at Haven's Beach. From Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four. Through Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, with the fireworks display on Friday, August ninth, twenty twenty-four. He also requests a rain date for the fireworks display. On Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, in addition, he requests to place signs on Long Wharf. Mash Hashemit Park. And Route one fourteen, from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, to August sixth, twenty twenty-four, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, second, seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us to the. Approve, improvement of the bills. I'll. Present them all at once, starting with a motion to approve payments presented in warrant number thirty-two. In the amount of four hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Warrant number thirty-three. In the amount of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Warrant number thirty-four, in the amount of nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. Warrant number thirty-five, in the amount of five thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and two cents. Warrant number thirty-six, in the amount of four hundred eighty-seven thousand, nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents, do I have a motion to pay the warrants?
I'll move it.
Motion by deputy mayor, hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? So moved, that brings us to our public comments, we have fifteen-minute public session. Input for comments and questions, limit three minutes per speaker. Kate?
If I'm Richard Star, I was just curious, you know, this discussion of Long Island Avenue and the jitney stuff. What, what, what is the rationale for thinking about moving the jitney?
The thought, if we think of all the congestion on Main Street, trying to figure potential ways to alleviate that. And when you see. The drop-offs, especially in the height of the summer. Right there in front of the fire station, and. You know, it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not just the jitney itself, it's the people coming to park to drop people off, pick people up, it adds to the parking and congestion on Main Street as well. So we're just looking for alternatives, again, conceptual idea, we're looking at things to evaluate, what are, what are other options?
And, and when, you know, that's the whole thing with this traffic study. To look at that, as well as the environmental study, to look at stormwater runoff and water quality. You know, way to, ways to mitigate issues, this would be just a way to. Ask a professional to come in and look at it, and, and if. The, the one idea is to move over to that waterfront where the village owns that property. And we can make some suggested changes there, or maybe there's other options.
Or not, because it seems to me that the commercial district is where the buses should be.
Was just, just an option.
Maybe there are other options, we start the conversation and see where it leads, I think it's a worthy conversation, because in summertime. Everybody thinks it's just them, I'm just picking up my mom, my dad, but it turns out to be. You know, that just me times forty-five or fifty people that are on the bus, and it's.
And we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that the major focus of that is improving the safety on Long Island Avenue. Water Street, creating waterfront walking areas, connecting the waterfront spaces, creating crosswalks, parking, so people can walk in that area. Yes. And that's one aspect of the, the, the idea of moving the jitney, there was another aspect of it to consider.
I just have, before I get, get to you, sir, I have one other action item I'd like to put on. Which is the ambulance corps has requested. They've already, I believe this is their reserve account, so they, they need to take funds out of their reserve account, looking for our support. For one Lucas chest compression system, which is the system that we use. Which does chest compressions instead of, you know, manually having to do it. And four A E Ds that need to be replaced. So the total amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, the money is there in the reserve.
What's an A D?
It's an automatic defibrillator, yeah, that's the, the thing that shocked.
I'm glad that you don't know. I don't know what that is.
Exactly.
Long way that's.
But we do want them around.
Yes, so they need to replace the security, and we need a motion to, to give them the authority to take their, out of the reserves. Motion by trustee Plum, second.
I'll say.
Seconded by trustee Corus, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Subject to permissive referendum.
So we have to post it for thirty days in various spots throughout the village. Keep it open for comments, and then after thirty days, they can go ahead and purchase.
Okay, but we don't have to vote on it again. All right, sir, did you want to speak?
Mayor, members of the trustees, good evening, I'm Rob Calvert, forelabor lane. Personally, I'd like to say kudos to you for holding the upcoming workshop at the firehouse to discuss affordable housing. I hope the board will continue to implement by strategies to promote work for housing within the village. Some, however, are suggesting that this wait until the completion of a comprehensive plan. And then encourage this board to resist this thinking. We know that comprehensive plans seek consensus vision for a community's future. And that plans express people's values. And their aspirations form goals. And the best plans, the best plans. Make informed, achievable recommendations. We know the village doesn't have a comp plan. But the need for affordable housing has figured prominently into the community thinking for decades. Those early efforts like the Modern Income Residence District. And the Local Residential Housing Plan. Reflect deep-seated values and village goals. Goals that exist today. As does the severe housing situation. Imagine we are in a community meeting. Discussing the future village. The principle, a principal goal, as in the past, is affordable housing for local residents. For people whose livelihood enables them to live here. What percentage of the village population should be served? Ten percent? Fifteen percent? Perhaps twenty? Everyone has an opinion about where affordable housing should be located. Or how it should look. But few ask how many are needed. Or what percentage of the population should be served? Today, some seven percent of those who work in the village live here. We have every reason to believe that number will work from tomorrow. In other words, the current zoning strategies. For special exceptions for accessory apartments. With new sitting income targets. And the more recent A D U allowance together. Will not stem the tide against the further loss of affordability. What amount of affordability will the village resolve to accomplish? One cannot profess to support affordable housing for village residents. And think the current zoning strategies will increase overall affordability in our economic landscape. I think you would agree. That other strategies will be required. But what does that kind of solutions entail? And how could it support a future vision for the village? There are many reasons why a community succeeds or fails. In the implementation of their comprehensive plan. One key is the value, one key, excuse me, is the value of the recommendations themselves. Are they actionable? Are they solidly informed, and do they match the means? With the stated goals? If Sag Harbor is not sufficiently studying affordable housing solutions in parallel with and within its comprehensive plan. It cannot expect to inform or assist the community with its discussions. It is essential for these strategies to be developed. Analyzed and modeled now, not later. And done concurrently with the comprehensive plan. To ensure the success of both. Reluctance to do so is to welcome failure, in my opinion. This is either the sincere work of us all. Or the undesired fate of our collective neglect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say on that note, that I would welcome anybody and everybody from the village that. Has an opinion on affordable housing or is affected by affordable housing. That is struggling to keep their, whether it's their children or their elderly family members with them. To come to this meeting, and I want to hear from you, I want to hear from the public, from people that this is actually affecting. So that we can implement a strategy that's going to help you and help people stay in their homes. Help the next generation, so thank you for your comments. And I look forward to seeing you at the Affordable Housing Workshop. Any more comments? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Kane, seconded by deputy mayor, hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.